I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, to kick things off, thank you all for coming. We have a number of recognitions to start today's agenda. And first up, I'd like to recognize Andy Koch for building and flying a replica of Gustav Whitehead's airplane. And if I might read a proclamation on behalf of the town. Whereas in recognition of the recent 112th anniversary of Gustav Whitehead's 1901 historic first flight in Fairfield and Bridgeport, the town of Fairfield is proud to honor Andy Koch who built a replica of Whitehead's airplane number 21 in 1985. And whereas Mr. Koch, a longtime Fairfield resident and a former Roger Ludlow High School science teacher, I happen to be going to Ludlow at the time he was there, so I can vouch for Andy's tenure, who now teaches at Platt Tech High School. And whereas after attending a lecture about Gustav Whitehead at the Fairfield History Museum in the late 1970s and teaching a YMCA hang gliding course at Sturgis Park, Mr. Koch was inspired to build and fly a Whitehead replica. And whereas Mr. Koch flew his replica at Bridgeport Airport on December 29, 1986, flying it for 330 feet at a height of five to six feet above the ground. And whereas Mr. Koch took the replica to an Experimental Aircraft Association fly-in in 1987, over 1 million people saw the plane over a one-week period. Visitors from Luderhausen?
Luedershausen.
Yes. What Mr. Koch said, he's still teaching me today. Germany saw the plane and asked Mr. Koch to take it to Germany, which built its own replica. And whereas Mr. Koch appeared in a variety of TV shows such as 60 Minutes and CBS News and has displayed his replica at a variety of venues, including the Fairfield History Museum, Fairfield's Earth Day, Barnum Festival, and most recently the Discovery Museum this past Saturday at a ceremony honoring Whitehead's first flight. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetrow, First Selectman of the Town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim August 21, 2013, is Andy Koch Day in the Town of Fairfield. Mr. Koch, congratulations. Andy, could you come on up? Do you want to help me present the proclamation, Mr. Koch?
Sure.
Just stand on this side of the podium.
Okay, Mike.
Get, come on over here, guys. Yeah, I think it'll photo, you know, my, okay. Take it, you guys get in there.
There we go.
Perfect.
On three, one, two, three. I'll just take one more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
There you go. Can I just say a few words?
Yes, I would.
Congratulations. Ask the podium a few words.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you, Mike, First Selectman. Thank you to my friends from the Discovery Museum who helped me and, yes, Gustav Whitehead flew in 1901 right here in Fairfield, and that's amazing. Fairfield should be like Kitty Hawk, North Carolina. So, we're hoping that things are going to get better for Whitehead. There is always an argument, it's hard to change people's ideas. I was brought up thinking that Whitehead, that, excuse me, the Wright brothers flew first. But after I built the plane and flew it, I was pretty convinced that Whitehead could easily have flown just like, just like I did. So, again, I hope you will follow the story about Gustav Whitehead. I hope you'll look in your attic and cellars and try to find pictures of Whitehead in flight. We still could use some more support for Gustav Whitehead. So, again, just thank you very much. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Andy, thank you. I also want to recognize that from the Discovery Museum, we have Mr. Dimitri Ratopoulos, Vice President, Lisa Richards, Marketing Manager, and Katie Reed, Senior Associate of Special Projects and Foundation Relations. The Discovery Museum has an ongoing Whitehead exhibit and have been crucial in terms of publicizing Mr. Whitehead's achievements and getting that record of history corrected. So, thank you and the Discovery Museum for all your efforts on this part. All right, next up, we have some additional recognition. Recognition for the Fairfield Ludlow High School Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Chapter-winning Gold/Silver Medal Award for National FCC LA Conference or at the National FCC LA Conference. Is there somebody who can address this and give us a little more background on what your award achieved?
Sure.
And, excuse me, your name is?
Emily.
Emily, you would come to the podium.
Okay.
And just give us a brief introduction. We have proclamations from the town for each of the young ladies' part of this. I think this is a very significant program, very significant award. It was the first I'd heard of it and I think the first we as a board had heard of it, so we wanted to give you proper recognition today and give you a chance to tell us but also the town a little bit about the award. You're obviously setting a great leadership example for the youth in our community and we'd like to properly recognize that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. FCC LA is one of the best leadership experiences and one of the best decisions I've ever made in my life of joining. It's the only family and consumer sciences-oriented leadership program for high school students available. And these awards were given based on a competing with a community service project at a, after having qualified at a state level, receiving gold, which qualified us to move on to the national level to further present our community service projects to the national level, so.
Wow, congratulations, congratulations. I'm going to read one proclamation, proclamation for each of the young women. Emily Devine, Jenny Moran, Phoebe Urteil, Meredith Brown, and Melanie Jennings. And each one of these recognizes today is your special day in Fairfield, so stay up late tonight. The Town of Fairfield congratulates Fairfield Ludlow High School student Emily Devine, and I'm going to use your name throughout, but there's, the proclamation has your individual names on that as we go through, for winning the Gold Award at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders Day of, Leaders of America National Leadership Conference in Nashville, Tennessee in July and at the State Leadership Conference in April. And whereas Emily is a member of Fairfield Ludlow High School's FCC LA Chapter and is an FCC LA State Officer, which state position?
Currently the Vice President membership.
Congratulations. And whereas Emily won the Gold Award for her STAR, which stands for Student Taking Action with Recognition Project, which was Healthy Eating is Elementary. And whereas the theme of this year's national conference was Discover Your Voice, over 7,000 delegates from 50 states, including Puerto Rico and the U.S. Virgin Islands, attended the conference. And whereas FCC LA is a dynamic and effective national student organization that helps young men and women become leaders and address important personal, family, work, and societal issues throughout, through family and consumer sciences education. The organization founded in 1945 has involved more than 10 million youth. And whereas FCC LA's programs are run by its members, it is the only national in-school organization with family as its central focus. FCC LA's involvement helps members become strong leaders in their communities and careers and families. There are a couple of this. Wow, we've got, there are a couple of different things, so I'm going to, with your permission, read just the excerpts that might be a little different for each student, just so they each get their recognition here. Ladies, if you would come up and surround the podium. Let's see, next up is Jenny Moran. Jenny? Okay. Thank you for coming today. Jenny is a member of Roger Ludlow, Fairfield Ludlow High School's FCC LA Chapter and won the Gold Award for her STAR project, Healthy Eating is Elementary. The theme of this year's conference was Discover Your Voice, over 7,000 delegates from 50 states. And whereas FCC LA is a dynamic and effective national student organization that helps young men and women become leaders, address important personal, family, work, and societal issues through the family and consumer sciences education. It is also your special day today, Jenny. Thank you. And Phoebe?
Hi.
Hi, Phoebe. Let's see, Phoebe is a member of Fairfield Ludlow High School's FCC LA Chapter and won the Gold STAR Award for her STAR project, Healthy Eating is Elementary. The theme of this year's national conference was Discover Your Voice with over 7,000 delegates from 50 states. FCC LA is a dynamic and effective national student organization that helps young men and women become leaders and address important personal, family, work, and societal issues through family and consumer sciences education. And congratulations on your day. Next up is Meredith. Thank you for coming. Meredith is a member of Ludlow's FCC LA Chapter and is an FCC LA State Officer. Meredith, which office?
Co-Vice President of membership.
Very good, very good. Meredith won the Silver Award for her STAR project, Cozy Kids 3. Is that like a sequel? Was there Cozy Kids 1 and 2?
They're, they're, they already done it.
Oh, excellent. The theme of this year's national conference was Discover Your Voice, over 7,000 delegates from 50 states, including Puerto Rico and the U.S. Virgin Islands, attended the conference. The rest is the same on that. And Melanie Jennings.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for coming. Melanie is a member of Ludlow's FCC LA Chapter. She won the Silver Award for her STAR project, which is also Cozy Kids 3. Now, did you guys team together on that?
Yes.
And the other guys team together on the first one? All right. The theme of this year's conference was Discover Your Voice, over 7,000 delegates from 50 states, including Puerto Rico and the U.S. Virgin Islands, attended. And the balance of the proclamation is the same. Melanie, enjoy your day. All right, congratulations. We've got these for each of you. Come on up. Let's see. Melanie? Meredith? Phoebe?
Thank you.
And Jenny?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if we can all fit in.
We can try.
Let's get, let's get around. Do you want to go by?
I'm tall. You don't have to be.
Doing this all for Mr. Brophy's benefit, so that...
The red's not yellow. That's right.
We did four more. One more?
Big smile.
Thank you. Now, we did let Emily speak. Did anyone else want to speak or offer some words of their insights on experience?
Highlights of the trip?
It was interesting getting to know...
Okay, let's, let us sit down. Can you step up the podium?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It was interesting getting to know the cultures of every other state, even though we're part of one country. From California to Arkansas to Montana, we all had different high schools and high school experiences and how FCC LA affected us. So, it was really interesting getting to know different people. There were so many people there, you just, it was just a different viewpoint from everyone. It was really interesting.
Great. Would anyone else like to say a word?
Say something.
Please. Do you realize you're in front of 35 million people across the country?
Hi, Mom. I'll get in trouble with my dad for not saying hi. It was, once again, like going off from what Meredith said, it was interesting to meet the kids from the other states. A lot of them sadly weren't really sure where Connecticut was or what it was. So, it was cool to talk about how we live versus them. We did get a little political with them, I can say, about how they live versus our lives. And it was, it was just such an honor to be down there and I didn't like, when we first got the Gold Award at the state level, I didn't think we'd actually end up going through. And it took, it took a push with the town and stuff and our advisor, but it benefited really nicely in the end.
Again, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, my colleagues, would you guys care to add a few words? Go ahead.
I'd love to. I just want to thank each of you young women for your leadership. And I think the thing that's really interesting about this program is that it's family-based. And one thing that every human being on the planet has in common is we all are part of a family. And our lives are in many ways based in family. When we have careers and hobbies and all, school, it's all part of that and in different ways. So, I think it's really neat that you have an opportunity to look at that in terms of how it impacts in the greater world. So, thank you for your leadership.
And I'd like to thank you as well and also congratulate you on both your awards and your representation of Fairfield across the country. You've made us all very proud. And like my fellow selectmen have mentioned, the emphasis on family is very important. And thank you very much for putting your focus on those matters for other children and younger people to learn from and to serve as role models for them. So, thank you.
And I'll just echo my colleagues' marks in saying thank you for your leadership and on behalf of the town, thank you for setting such a great example for all of our youth. All right. And again, stay up late, enjoy your day.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting June 5, do we have that in front of us?
We do.
May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any comments or changes needed?
Yes, I think before us, there is a set of amended, proposed amendments within, throughout the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if people had a chance to review ahead of time, beginning with item number 12. Did I go through each of these?
Sure. I think the minutes before us are as presented, so I don't know, you can probably make sense to go through and just emphasize those or make sure that we're aware of them and anybody watching at home is aware of them.
Okay.
But unless you feel we need to motion each one of those, I think if we accept the document as it is, we should be okay? I think so.
Item number 12 in the last main paragraph would be striking the entire sentence that reads, "Future projects will include schools," and replaced with, "Mr. Bowman had discussed potential school projects with Tom Kellen and Salmo Arvito of the special office."
Okay, that change is in the document that we're reading.
Correct.
There is, there are two documents that we have in front of us. One is, that came within the package, and that does not have these amendments typed in. These are the draft amendments that were submitted. The second document actually has the proposed amendments typed in, in bold, in the document.
Just to be clear, Jen, the one in front of us on the table is the new version with the changes?
Yes.
Okay, so, do you have any use going?
Yeah.
I'm good, I just want to make sure I'm holding the right one.
Yep, you got it. Okay. The next, it's on the next page under item number 14, where it says, "Follow-up." Strike, follow, the sentence, "Selectmen asked about a breakout in documentation," and replace with, "Selectmen asked for a percentage breakdown of residents/businesses participating in each qualifying area." And further down, strike the last sentence, "Mr. Bowman, system is controlled locally," and replace with, "Selectmen Kylie asked if a web portal could be provided. Mr. Bowman said that it could be explored." By the way, I'd be curious to hear the follow-ups on that, just as in size. On the next page, within item number 15, striking the complete sentence, "The selectmen thanked Mr. Paulus," and replace with, "The selectmen thanked Ms. Paulus for her work and noted the grant is about how to meet the needs of young people and prevent risky behavior." And the following paragraph, strike the entire paragraph that begins, "Selectmen McCarthy Vehi asked about non-gathered programming," and replace with, "Selectmen McCarthy Vehi asked Ms. Paulus to consider outreach to teens who do not attend programs in order to assess their needs as well. She suggested the use of social media as a potential tool." On the following page under item number 16, Alyssa Israel, her comments after the colon would be replaced with, "This document, research, and collaboration would put the town in a better position to receive grant funding from private sources and the state and federal government." Under item number 17, and this was Fair TV, sorry I wasn't noting which is which, under Selectmen Kylie's comments, strike the language, "Asked about the process in place to assure independent oversight," and replace with, "Selectmen Kylie asked how programming decisions would be made during the interim period. Mr. Cannelli's reply," and I would add this sentence at the end, "The current committee will abide by the proposed ordinance language." And I believe that's it.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept these?
We did.
And seconded?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor? All opposed? One abstention.
Thank you.
Next up, to consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting July 2, 2013. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Cannelli?
May I go back to June 5 and move to accept the minutes as amended? Right?
Yes, thank you, you're right.
We voted to...
We had a motion for the main.
Right, okay.
Yeah, no, a second there. Sorry, you did ask and we, we had a motion for the main, but not the amended.
We, we voted on a motion to accept the amendments and I was just moving the minutes as amended, right?
Yeah, what, since these are the minutes as distributed, it's simple, go ahead and do that, yes.
Sure.
Just do that, just do that. So, that's it, to reconsider, motion to reconsider.
No, I was just, I was just voting to accept them as amended, because we amended them and voted on the amendments. Do we need to vote on them as amended or not?
The original motion was to accept the minutes as presented.
Oh, it was?
Yes.
Then, then we don't need to do that, okay.
All right, because the amendments were included in the minutes as distributed, but voting on this, if you're comfortable with that, if not, we can vote on...
No, that explains it.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Yep. Got it.
Normally, we don't have the amendments already included in tight format in the minutes.
In the, right.
So, I'm just going to check, Jen, my stating of the motion that was originally for those minutes is correct?
Yes.
We're good, thank you.
So, off that, we're on to appointments. May I have a motion to accept an appointment to the Golf Commission, Mr. Philip Collin, unaffiliated from 111 Harbor Terrace for a term of 4/9, 4/14. He is replacing Tammy K. Peterson, who resigned. And I believe Mr. Collin is here?
Second.
All right. I believe Mr. Collin and some special guests are here.
Yes.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Collin?
No, I just wanted to, you know, thank you for volunteering to serve on this commission and we appreciate your, your volunteerism and we look forward to working with you.
Thanks for the appointment, I appreciate it.
Yes, I concur with Selectman Kylie and also think that your background will give you a unique perspective and I think will be welcome on the commission, so thank you very much for your willingness to serve and to your family as well.
Along as last, Mr. Collin, if you could come up to the podium, please.
There you go.
Future golfers.
I promised him if I had to, he would.
That's good, that's good. I wouldn't let you go out unsupervised either. The, again, I want to concur with my colleagues, I want to thank you for stepping up. I think this is, you are what we would call new blood in terms of, I think this is one of the first experience you've had in volunteering for the town in a capacity like this. I want to thank you for, for taking the risk and helping our community out. And also want to give you the opportunity to introduce your special guest to the rest of town.
This is my, my family, my wife Samantha, who I have to thank for bringing this position to my attention, so thank you and thank you, honey. And this is our daughter Alexandra, six and a half, and Cameron, four and a half.
All right.
Alex started, she'll be starting first grade this year at Mill Hill and Cameron is still in Trinity Nursery School.
Wow, Alex, what's your handicap?
Ask him what his is.
He's the golfer.
What do you like to do best on the golf course? What's your favorite shot?
Part three.
To go to the part three.
The part three. He likes the sand shots.
Let's see, any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
We are.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Nice to see you, Michael.
All right. Our next appointment to be considered, may I have a motion to accept for the Town Facilities Commission, Kimberly Marshall, Democrat, 180 Brookbend Road, for a term of 7/13 to 7/16. And this is to replace Edwin Hill, whose term expired.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marshall is here. If we have any questions, any comments from the board?
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the appointment.
Kim, if you could come up to the podium just for a moment. If nothing else, the folks at home, good to see you. The TFC Commission meetings are not always as widely publicized throughout town. And again, I want to thank you. The Town Facilities Commission serves a wide range of needs for our town and provides some excellent advice, both as we go through the budget process on certain projects, but also in helping manage some of our special projects and other needs throughout the town. And it's a group of volunteers that provide exceptional technical background to help the rest of us out who perhaps don't have as much technical background, so I think that role in the town process is extremely important. So, thank you for stepping up and helping us out.
You're welcome.
Did you have any thoughts that you'd care to share?
Actually, I did not know that Fairfield had so many town-owned buildings besides the schools. I think it's something like 50. So, I think I could probably find most of them around town, but I guess I have a lot to learn as far as, you know, what, what the town owns and the condition things are in and the whole process is something I'm very comfortable with.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Back to the board?
I just wanted to come and thank you because I know you've served in multiple roles and in terms of Woods and Osborn Hill and want to thank you for being willing to do that. We're fortunate to have your experience as well as your expertise, so thank you.
We have great town, we have great buildings, and I'm happy to contribute any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, item number seven, the Greater Bridgeport Regi... Oh, did we vote? I'm sorry. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. My apologies. Greater Bridge, next up, item number seven, the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council. This is a little bit different than typically items that come before us. This is not something that technically we need to approve. It could go straight to the RTM. It was my thought that it should come before this board, so our board was aware of it, that we had a chance to hear the presentation, so that's why you'll notice that it says, "Resolution recommended to the RTM."
Okay.
You're welcome.
Did you have any thoughts that you'd care to share?
Actually, I did not know that Fairfield had so many town-owned buildings besides the schools. I think it's something like 50. So, I think I could probably find most of them around town, but I guess I have a lot to learn as far as, you know, what the town owns and the condition things are in, and the whole process is something I'm very comfortable with.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Back to the board?
I just wanted to come and thank you, because I know you've served in multiple roles, and in terms of Woods and Osborne Hill, and want to thank you for being willing to do that. We're fortunate to have your experience as well as your expertise, so thank you.
Thank you. We have great town, we have great buildings, and I'm happy to contribute any way I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, item number seven, the Greater Bridgeport Regi... Oh, did we vote? I'm sorry. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
My apologies. Greater Bridgeport, next up, item number seven, the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council. This is a little bit different than typically items that come before us. This is not something that technically we need to approve. It could go straight to the RTM. It was my thought that it should come before this board, so our board was aware of it, that we had a chance to hear the presentation, so that's why you'll notice that it says "Resolution Recommended to the RTM."
Okay.
So may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
A second? All right, and just to be clear, this is to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution, resolved the Board of Selectmen recommends that the representative town meeting adopt the attached resolution regarding Greater Bridgeport Regional Council. Mr. Bedoli is here from the GBRC, and Brian, could you give us a bit of background on this?
Good afternoon, thank you for having me again. I'm here to seek your support about a resolution that's been going around to our member towns. It's essentially an administrative item to run start filing with the State of Connecticut. The State of Connecticut recently passed legislation requiring that all regional planning organizations be restructured as councils of governments. Previously, there was three types of regional planning organizations, there was the Regional Planning Agency, the Council-Elected Official, and the Council of Governments, in an effort to standardize, make it a lot more common in terms of how they, we deal with the state and our organizational structure, they want one type across the state. We're in a unique position where our council-elected officials, which was provided flexibility, actually operates exactly as a council of governments today. So, when we came to you about three years ago to have that conversion from the Regional Planning Agency to the council-elected officials, that in effect made us a council of government, but our filing with the State of Connecticut was technically a council-elected officials. This would clean that up to make us in compliance with this new state legislation. So nothing changes, none of the services that we provide to town, no costs are additional and being incurred.
All right, and simply, just to provide some background, I get together with other First Selectmen, other mayors from the region, we consider different programs and regional events, we keep each other up to date as to what's going on from that standpoint. The GBRC works with us to coordinate state grants, and importantly, federal grants, to make sure that when it crosses town boundaries, or can be best approved and managed by them to get individual town to benefit from that. So it's something that we have on an ongoing basis, so it's literally changing the label on the group, as opposed to changing the process in terms of what takes place. So, any questions?
No.
Hi, having served on the RTM at the time, the first transition was made, that was a big question, people wanted to know how many other groups had already signed on, and where that was in the process, which I don't anticipate you'll have the same types of questions with that going forward. But what happens if we don't adopt this resolution?
Well, especially the state, there isn't anything really punitive at this point. They're recommending that we all adopt by January 1st, 2015, with subsequent legislation. Effectively, what they're saying is that regional planning organizations of our type will not exist anymore. What that means in terms of our, you know, overall structure, given the fact that we're funded by a variety of sources that are outside of the state requirements, we still would maintain the same board, just probably lose maybe some state funding as a result. So, assuming that they would pass the legislation, that's not hard and fast yet, it's kind of vague.
All right, thank you.
Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, are we ready to vote on our recommendation?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, item number eight. From the Director of Public Works, which would require Board of Finance and RTM approval, to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works, resolve that the town of Fairfield appropriate $1.3 million towards the cost of creating a microgrid to serve fire headquarters, police headquarters, the cell tower of 100 Reef Road, ECC or Emergency Communications Center, and Operation Hope. And further resolve that the First Selectmen is authorized to accept and expend a grant from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection in the amount of $1.167, $1.167,659 to pay a portion of the cost of such appropriation. Further resolve that the First Selectmen is authorized to execute on behalf of the town of Fairfield any and all necessary documentation to secure such a grant. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second.
A second.
Thank you. And just to be clear on the math, that's going to leave about a...
$133,000.
It's about a 90 percent reimbursable grant, so the town is putting in approximately $130,000 if this is approved by all the boards. Mr. Bowman, would you care to take us through this, please?
Sure. And the concept here is to provide secure power to critical facilities in the town during times of either storm, or in times, any other time, when power is interrupted for any reason whatsoever. And you do, by doing that through what's called a microgrid. It involves a lot of electronic and communications data through very sophisticated computers. And what we do is, and right now, if power goes out, even the existing generator we have at the police station would shut down, it's called running in parallel. When you have onsite generation, when power lines go out, they shut down, and emergency generators kick in. The reason they shut down is they're afraid of a surge of power when power lines come back, and alignment or someone could get killed, or it could blow down. You know, people think lines aren't charged, all of a sudden, the generator power goes on that line, back flows across the lines. So what this program does is allow it to run in island mode, they call it. So all our generation, the photovoltaic, the existing generator, the emergency generator, would all run, you know, when power lines are down. So the 100 percent of the power needs will be met at all times. The emergency generator we have there would be converted to natural gas, because the requirement of the grant is you have a 30-day supply of fuel for the emergency generator, and there's no way we could have a 30-day tank of the diesel fuel for that generator. By just replacing that with an emergency, generator runs on natural gas, just runs off the line in the ground, and then we can use that emergency generator in another building somewhere. So the grant does provide for all, the only thing the town, the grant doesn't provide for is capital. So the grant provides for all the computerized equipment, it provides for all the lines in the street, the interac agreement with the United Illuminating, a whole bunch of other technical stuff, but it will not buy the emergency generator. So therefore, we've budgeted $115,000 with a few thousand dollars' orders to buy and install an emergency generator at the police station. We do have a price from Yankee Electric for that generator, but just in case there's a little overrun somewhere, we have an extra, what is it, $17,000 available for any kind of overrun. The price from Schneider Electric, who is our contractor there, is a fixed-price, fixed-price contract, it's a design build, no matter what, he gets paid that amount of money, and he gets paid that amount by the state government. However, it's a reimbursable grant, therefore, we have to appropriate the money, expend it, and they get reimbursed by the state. The amount of time we're doing this work is only like three or four months, so it'll be done and completed by January, February, and the reimbursement will be made before the end of the fiscal year. I think that sums it up.
Just a couple of questions, if I might, just to clarify a few things. One, you answered the timing, thank you very much on that. In terms of the town contribution, could you clarify where that would come from?
That would come from appropriation from surplus, and then, because it would be...
Actually, technically, I think we, you mentioned contingency.
Yeah.
Current-year contingency fund, when we talk about that.
Contingency, right, sorry.
So that's why, just to clarify to the board, that's why there's no bond resolution before us? So the idea is that we would be expending this money, getting reimbursed, and using the current-year contingency fund to fund the 130, approximately $130,000 contribution of the town on this?
One thing I did forget to mention, it's a very important part of this grant, is the cell tower. They found during the last few storms, in a number of places, the cell tower communications were down, as well as the phone lines. People who had fire, police, or ambulance emergencies had no way to get in touch with the emergency communication centers on towns. They couldn't use the landlines, they couldn't use cellphone lines. So for that reason, we want, we made sure that all these cellphone lines would also be part of the system. It's no good to have emergency communication center if you can't get through to them, so...
Yeah, and just to clarify, in Fairfield, we did not have that problem with our cell tower.
Right.
However, Mr. Bowman's correct, as we sat in on the statewide conference calls, there were a number of smaller municipalities across the state where cell towers went down, and that hurt communication in a wide variety of areas, including emergency communication.
So just to ensure that it never happened.
And Mr. Bowman, any data on payback for this expenditure based on...
Not really, I mean, we're talking about an emergency power, it would be, it would depend on the amount of time power is out, you know, from a storm or event, so $115,000 is not really a payback item, it's really just having that power needed when necessary.
Okay, so this is for, in essence, security of our communication system?
That's correct.
So that it's continuously up and running?
That's correct.
Regardless of power availability, it's not just a move for more efficient or achieving power?
Right, it's not a move at all, it's more for reliability.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions from the board? Kristin?
A few, thank you, Mr. Bowman, as I said to you the other day, I think today is the Ed Bowman Show at the Board of Selectmen, and it's amazing, the work that you are doing. I just wanted to ask a question about the math, and make sure that I'm understanding. The resolution, the grant amount from deep is $1,167,659. The appropriation is 1.3 million, and the difference is the $132, which is to pay for that natural gas generator.
$115,000, or $111,000, I guess, is for that, and the $17,000 is a contingency, in case we needed for some unexpected problem with the emergency generator.
Okay. Okay, great. Just wanted to, I was noticing in the letter from the state that they had reduced the grant amount, you had requested 1.2, but they reduced the amount, and that cost is actually gone.
Right, it was double counted.
It was a complication, okay.
Also, I'd also point out, what doesn't show here is that that company, Schneider Electric, worked with us to provide all these applications over the last year without getting paid. They took the risk that they would get the grant, and if they got the grant, they did get their upfront costs reimbursed by another $52,000, but we did not have to pay for that. They assumed that risk. We didn't win the grant, they wouldn't have got paid at all, so I think that was very nice of them, to say the least.
Any further questions?
And I'm trying to find the attachment, it was Attachment E, and I don't see it in the printed, I'm trying to go back on my, it talked about annualized costs, and if I'm not, if I'm remembering correctly, it had to do with the, the gas?
Just, while Kristin's looking at, Mr. Bowman, can you step us through any, what's going to happen on an annual basis for this? What are the operating costs?
The only operating cost to the town would be, there'd be two. One is if we use burned natural gas or emergency generator, and there may be another cost, which we haven't looked at yet, but I would like to have proposed that there's a maintenance agreement for the system, Schneider Electric, to give us an agreement to make sure it's running properly. I don't think it's the kind of thing that town employees have, you know, the kind of capacity to do. So that, that's not a known cost, yet we haven't asked them about that. But I'm sure it's like, if you're talking about $8,000 or $10,000 a year, not a large cost.
Okay, how long would it take to get that maintenance agreement, or kind of a...
I'm sure we'd have it within a week.
So, may I follow up on that?
Please.
That's essentially my question, the Attachment E was the annual operating budget summary for the microgrid, and the costs broken out were for fuel, but also purchased utility power, which was the largest amount of that.
But we do that anyway, yeah.
Exactly, that's what I was about to say. That, that cost would be happening one way or another, so really, the only difference is what you just said to the First Selectmen, is the fuel and perhaps a maintenance.
Yes.
Contract, okay. The only other question I had was, do all the parties involved, who will be impacted physically, structurally, know that this is happening? The fire department, Operation Hope, the police department, has everyone...
Yep, we all met together, just a few weeks, we had to go through all this, so...
Wonderful, all right, thank you.
I don't know about the cellphone, I'm worried, they don't, that's just going to attach their power, you know, there's no change there, so...
Great, thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Ed, how are you?
Very good.
Yeah. Couple of quick questions, on the generator, I just want to make sure I'm clear, because in the last couple, two or three years, we've purchased a number of generators around town, this is, this is not any of those, this is specific to this program, and is it duplicative to any generator we currently have?
Yes, it is. It's better on site, which we would replace with a natural gas generator, and then take this generator, use it on a different building, perhaps a school building. I know the First Selectmen has made some inquiries of superintendent, to see if there's any school building that could use it. It's, it's a three, or four, or five-year-old generator, it's perfectly good, it's just it doesn't fit the requirements of the microgrid.
Okay, good, and I think you did mention that, that there was a, a second generator before, so thank you for that. As far as the, the 30-day fuel storage requirement, and you said we can't do that with diesel, and that's because of physical reasons?
Yeah, physical space on that site.
You don't have, you don't have room?
Sewer treatment plant, the fireworks garage, we could do it, if not there.
Right, but a natural gas line that's underground, potentially susceptible to certain types of natural disasters, is okay and does qualify as a constant flow?
Yeah, that's one of the things they, they wanted to say, actually.
It was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it could be disrupted, but not likely at that site, unless it was an explosion. A natural disaster like down the beach would disrupt those lines, but up there, it's out of the 100-year flood plain, they don't believe it would pose of any kind of a measurable problem.
Okay, so even though that gas line is potentially disruptive?
Yeah, I asked that question at the time, yeah, right.
And, but it certainly qualifies for this?
Yes.
Okay. And you do have a contingency, so the, the 115 is for the generator, the 17 is for the contingency, and the 132 plus the 1.1167 gets you up to 1.3?
Exactly.
Okay, so I'm, I'm good on the math. I guess my next question is for First Selectmen Tetra. So, can we just quickly talk about where we're going to fund the $132,000 from? And any details on that?
Just from contingency, in a current-year budget.
From contingency in the current-year budget?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm assuming there's plenty of room in there to do that?
Oh, there's enough room to cover this expenditure, correct.
Okay, so, I'm trying to go back to our Board of Finance days, when we move money from contingency, who has to act and vote on that? Is it us and the Board of Finance, or just the Board of Finance?
Well, I, the actual transfer is typically voted on by the Board of Finance at the end of the year. Like, coming up in next month, the Board of Finance will be voting on different transfers for accounts, as all the accounts are balanced up and cleaned up as part of the year-end processing.
Right.
All right. This, the purpose of this is to make it clear that we plan on doing that, so that all the boards, Board of Finance and RTM, as well as our board, have basically voted and approved in concept that we'll be making that transaction.
Right. So when the Board of Finance does their annual cleanup work in September, that's, that's the work?
In this case, it would be September of next year, but yes.
Oh, so you're talking about looking at the September of '14 cleanup work for June 30th of '13?
June 30th of '14, we're already past June 30th of '13.
Right, but when they meet in a couple of weeks and do the cleanup work, they're doing it for this past June?
Yeah, because this won't have been approved by the RTM yet?
Right.
And it won't have been spent yet, so it's part of the current-year budget fiscal '14, it's not part of fiscal '13, which is done.
Right, so, following that just for a minute, just so I can understand, so the current year, the 2014 contingency, from your perspective, is, is, has enough money in it to cover this particular item?
Correct.
Okay, so, thinking through that, in the past, when we were moving a significant amount of money from contingency, what type, what, what action did the Board of Selectmen take? I just don't remember. Do we, do we have, do we have to vote on that, because...
I think there are two issues here. Traditionally, we wouldn't be voting on moving money from contingency at this point in the year.
Correct.
Because, because normally, you're going through the operating budget, and as things get plussed and minus throughout there, you wait until the end, see where they came out, and then make adjustments from that point. This being an item that in essence is outside of the operating budget.
Mm-hmm.
So the question then becomes, if we were funding this, if we're taking four or five years to get this $1.3 million back, we would probably go out with a bonding resolution.
Right.
Right? And replenish it as we go.
And do what we don't, we do.
So there'd be a bonding resolution attached to this.
Right, right, right.
In essence, we'd be bonding the, our town share, in that case. Because of what we're doing here, because it's a short-term project with a very short-term payback, all happening within the current fiscal year, we don't need a bonding resolution for that.
Right.
We can then, and we're able to take the town share or contribution out of the current year contingency.
Okay.
So it's because it's in such a short term, all within the current fiscal year, we can make those transactions. That transfer, at the end of the year, next September, as we're cleaning up all the accounts, we would then either take that out of contingency, or whichever other kind of account was available. Right now, the plan is to use contingency to do that. The actual accounting transaction would be approved by the Board of Finance at that time.
And I get all of that. I guess the question that's still lingering, because this is a great project, so please excuse the financial questions. By, by voting for the 1.3, we're committing to the 130, is what this?
Correct.
Vote tonight tells me.
Correct, yes.
So if I'm committing to the 130, I'm just wondering if there's any legislative action that needs to take place to memorialize that 130, whether it's just us voting on a transfer from contingency, or us voting on something else, just to validate that we are agreeing to assume that $132,000 of liability and fund it from contingency?
Uh, it?
Am I asking it the right way?
Can I follow up? I, and I hear what you're saying, and I'm grateful for this discussion, because I think in the language of the resolution, it's clear we're committing to the 1.3. We'll get back?
Most of it, yeah.
Right.
Right, right.
But I actually, you know, in thinking about this more, and even as listening to the conversation, the intent would be to fund it out of contingency, right? That would be the intent. Obviously, we're early in the year, and if we have some interesting events, weather-wise, as we did last year, there may have to be different conversations on many levels about our budget, as we have had this year. So I think, in some respects, my comfort level would be to vote the general resolution as it is, understanding that the Board of Finance, at the end of the next fiscal year, you know, certainly at that point in time, if we find we want to make a statement as to our preferences, but that the Board of Finance will be having to make those ultimate decisions, and even administratively during the year. If we find that the contingency is going to be overburdened, then this may end up having to come out a different way through management of the public works budget, for example. Not ideal, but whatever, I guess what I'm saying is, I would rather vote as it is today, recognizing that our intent and our hope is that it can come out of contingency, but that we don't know what the year holds.
Yeah. I think to reinforce that, I mean, at some point, you know, we have an obligation with every operating budget, to finish on a positive note. And that is our goal this year as well.
Mm-hmm.
Kristin, your point's well taken, and that to say exactly, to make a transfer out of contingency right now, may not be needed, and may not be appropriate, based on how the year finishes out, and where we have a plus or minus in that. But knowing that we plan to use this much of contingency, we know that we have less contingency available. So if any unusual circumstances, or unique events take place, we then have to manage to that unique event. We know we don't have as much fallback. If, you know, it's the same thing as having Hurricane Irene happen earlier in the year, and we know we have to account for that, versus another storm happening in May or June, or a Nemo happening in February or March, where we know we have a lot of overtime that we hadn't planned to up to that point, but then we have to compensate for that, and make that up in different accounts in the budget. So, that is part of the ongoing management. And Kevin, as we've adjusted on the Board of Finance, Kristin, as you've seen on the RTM, as we've gone back and adjusted those operating accounts going through, so.
Yeah, and I'm not disagreeable with any of that, I'm just trying to understand, because this is a big chunk that we're committing to early in the year. So maybe what would be helpful is if maybe at our next meeting, or even at the Board of Finance meeting, and I can, you know, get my information there, if we could just get like an update on where we are with the current year contingency, because I just don't, I just have, I don't have a feel for how robust it is at the moment, yeah.
The simple, the simple answer is, we generally don't make any transfers out of contingency until the end of the year, when we see how the other accounts roll up, and we're balancing those out, and we're plus and minus everything out to see if, based on all the other pluses and minuses, we need to use any of the contingency. So, that would be difficult to, impossible to do at this point, because we haven't taken anything else out of contingency.
There haven't been any settlements that have come out of there, or anything like that, yet?
Not this year.
Not, not this year. Okay. All right, let me just, put some thought behind that.
I, I, again, recognize Selectmen Kylie's presentation. I think my, the one thing I will say is that, if, if possible, I would like, I would prefer, from my standpoint, that this, if it can, in the end, come out of contingency, as opposed to out of the public works budget. Because of the constraints that they faced last year, and I will just say that, but recognize, you know, the year.
Okay.
We won't know for certain until we're farther into the year. We'll have, we'll have a better ability to, that's why I suggested that, if we want to come back to it as we get closer to year end.
And that's perfectly fine. So that would lead me to my, I think my last question on this, because assuming all that's correct and accurate and agreeable, does the language we have in front of us, that's technically committing us to 1.3, which is 132,000 above what we know we're going to get back, do we want to at least reflect something in here about how we, because we, we're actually going to be voting on something that's committing to $133,000, $133,000 worth of town funding, and we really aren't stating how we plan to fund it? Would it be, would it be appropriate to just add on to here that we expect to fund this out of contingency? Just so the books balance, because we've got 1.3 going out, and the difference coming, or the 1.167 coming in. I'm not sure how to word it, but my suspicion is that subsequent bodies are going to look at this in a similar fashion, and wonder what we're committing to, and how we're going to honor that commitment, or from where? Even if it's contingency and subject to change?
Well, it, I think that was the reason for my questions, Mr. Bowman, up front, to clarify for this board exactly how that transaction is taking place.
Yeah.
I think it hit to address that, and add in something that the difference, or the town share, will be funded out of the current year operating budget. Let people clarify exactly what is intended, without being, the need to be any more specific than, so that we have the flexibility to go back at the end of the year, based on how accounts plus and minus out to fund it appropriately. But it's going to be funded out of the current year operating budget.
Okay, so, so you would, you would propose that, say, further resolved, et cetera, that the town portion be funded from the current year operating budget, than it specifically saying from the current year contingency account? Is that what you're proposing?
Correct.
Do you want to? I think that's agreeable language, and I think it at least raises the issue to the forefront for another body to, you know, have a view on it.
Yeah, we absolutely want to be very clear on that, in terms of, we're not bonding it.
Yep, we're not bonding it, we're not.
We're not taking out of surplus.
Not coming out of surplus.
It's coming out of the current year operating budget.
Sum within the budget. That would be agreeable language. At least we've addressed it in the, in the books balance, and we can move on with the more important matter of approving a great project. So, I move, may I?
Go forward ahead.
Okay. I move to amend Item 8, at the end of the second paragraph, to read, further resolved, that the town share of this project is to be funded from the 2013, 2014 town budget.
Town operating budget?
Town operating budget, thank you. That way, it puts it in there for discussion.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Any amendment only?
No, I think it's good.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion as amended is before us. Any further discussion on the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Any comments from the public? Back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Bowman, thank you. I guess you can stay there.
I was going to say, he can leave, but.
All right. Item 9, from the Director of Public Works. To here consider and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Resolve that the commercial property assessed Clean Energy Agreement, also known as CPACE, between the town of Fairfield and the Connecticut Clean Energy and Investment Authority is hereby approved, and further resolve that the First Selectmen is hereby authorized to execute such agreement on behalf of the town. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
Mr. Bowman, can you fill us in?
Yes. So in 2012, Connecticut passed legislation that provides that for owners of commercial industrial property, and including multi-family properties of five units or more, be able to borrow money at a subsidized rate to do energy efficiency or energy generation improvements on their properties. Fairfield was one of the targeted communities, 15 or so targeted communities, because it has the amount of existing commercial industrial property that is 50 years old or older is significant. May not make a similar part of our tax base that much, but it is a significant amount of property at that age. So it was a targeted town. The program is set up, so that the state pre-approved a list of contractors that do the work, they pre-approved a list of engineers that could help people design and price out the work. They then, the building owner then chooses the work that wants to be done, and submits that to the CFE, the Connecticut Clean Energy Finance Authority, for approval. Once the application is approved, and funding is installed, and the work begins. Now, prior, after its, the work is done, a lien is placed on the property. And it's a lien that stands in front of everything, it's the only thing it's subordinated to is property taxes. It stands ahead of the mortgage on the property. So it requires the approval of any property owner with a mortgage to do this. And there hasn't been any problem with that on the state. Half the banks that have the mortgage are also loaning the money through the CPACE program, more and more. Second, so that means that the loan stays with the property, not with the property owner. He sells the property, the loan stays there. That, that's an important part of this, it's really to the property. The towns, the cost of the town is almost minimal. Our tax collector actually worked with the Tax Collectors Association in Connecticut, and the company that does the computerized tax collection, where they developed a program to make this work at almost no cost. And almost everybody's using the program now. The amount of estimated cost for the town for a year is something like $400 or $500, which the state will actually reimburse us the time involved in doing that. So it's a very smooth program, running forward. And the whole intent of it is to, you know, to create more green power. As United Illuminating, other companies are required under this state law, to buy 20% of their power from green sources in Connecticut over the next 22 years. Some of which they could build themselves. The other way they do it is through this, oh, sorry, switching programs, that's the other next one. So, I'll stop right there for that.
Any further questions from the board?
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bowman. How has the reception in the community been to the program? Have you had a lot of interest from commercial developers and building owners?
The Economic Development Director has some interest from developers, and a few building owners who have already called and looking for us to do the program. The concept here is, they feel if they get four or five buildings a year, that's a significant amount of projects per town. So it's not going to be a rush of 100 buildings, it's going to be four or five in a year's time. That's significant.
Okay.
And we feel they already have two that are interested. And I think the more they get interested is, developers and engineers go talk to them about the program, and start to learn more about it, so.
Okay.
We'll see what happens.
And you made, you made a comment that I didn't catch all the way about the loan staying with billing, even if billing is sold. Can you just explain that better?
Right. Again, it's a lien placed on the property, until it's, like a mortgage, until it's paid off.
Right.
And, so, the tax clerk then collects the money, just like they do taxes, and twice a year sends it to the state. If the property is sold, the new owner assumes that obligation, and the lien stays with the new owner on that property until it's paid off.
Oh, so it, it doesn't get satisfied at closing?
No.
It stays, okay, and it, it moves with the property?
That's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you again, Mr. Bowman. When you're talking about all the details, it just helps me to realize all the work that you've done to put in to getting this in front of us, and I'm grateful. Clearly, you have talked to the tax collector and the town clerk, based on your comments, and the fact that she has that experience.
And the finance director, the three of them really work together. We wouldn't bring this program until the finance director signed off on it, it wouldn't cost the town any money, so it took a while, but we got it done.
Gotcha. That was, so that was one of my questions. You mentioned that, if I heard correctly, the state will reimburse us for any time with billing, or any of the administrative costs?
Yeah, because there really isn't any time with billing, it's just a computer-generated bill, just like the tax bill.
Okay, which is great. You also mentioned the other municipalities that it's been received well. How many municipalities are you aware of who are taking part so far, and how, do you know how it's working for them?
Something like 14 to 16 municipalities have participated. Bridgeport, Westport has. Westport is very satisfied with it. I didn't check with Bridgeport, I'm sure they're very satisfied also. And Westport, very, some of us is very happy with the program, so.
I, I'm very excited about this program. I think it's a phenomenal opportunity for our businesses, and a great way for public and private folks to partner. One of the things that you mentioned was that there's already been interest expressed. Do we have any plans to get the word out further, or?
Yeah, Economic Development Department is going to do that, implementing it through. They're the ones that naturally wants to do it, they have the contacts, and they're the group of taxpayers that are going to do that.
If I might expand on that, just to, Mark Bernhard and I have talked quite a bit about this, as this program's been working its way through, and as we've been dotting the i's and crossing the t's before bringing it to this board. This is, is really another program or benefit to our commercial taxpayers in town, and the idea is that this is another opportunity for us to, to get some payback for our taxpayers, in this case, from the state and from their use of green energy. It's good for the economy, it's good for the environment, and this will become part of a communication or marketing program from Mr. Bernhard's office, out to the landlords, property owners, and business owners in our town to take advantage of this.
Great. One last question. On the green energy component, the 20% requirement, is there enough local?
That's, that's the next problem, I, that was a, sorry, I mixed that up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
There's, there's.
I'm sorry.
I got confused there for a minute.
Okay. So there isn't the requirement for these folks to use 20% of their energy?
No.
That's the next one? Sorry about that.
The hope is that they will put photovoltaic in, but it's not a requirement.
Got it. Thank you.
So just as another follow-up on, I mean, all the things that are eligible, it's amazing looking at this list, the high-efficiency lighting, hot water heating systems, renewable energy systems. It's really a great opportunity for people.
Absolutely.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Bowman, thank you, and I think you're up next.
Yes.
Item number ten, from the Director of Public Works. To here consider an act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works. Resolved that the granting of an easement to ENCON for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system at the Fairfield train station parking lot at 165 Uncle Row for sole benefit of Tomlinson Middle School. The term of the agreement being twenty years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Bowman, can you step us through that?
Yes. This is a, you know, a solar program where they would actually build the structure over the parking lot and provide shelter from rain, snow and the elements.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be built high enough so we can plow under it, it'll be protected so the pylons are gonna be backed up by cars, won't get hit by the cars, and it'll provide a megawatt of electricity for Tomlinson Junior High School. Underneath the covers also, the LED lighting will be installed, so there'll be light in there, and one or two electric charging stations will be added to this as part of the program. The benefit, the Parking Authority benefit is that they can't provide the electricity for two sources, but what they're gonna do is provide them the money to pay for their electric bill as part of this. So in addition to providing the power for Tomlinson, they would provide cash to pay for the electric bill of the train station that the Parking Authority now pays. So it's a triple benefit there. You get power to one, money to another, and we also get electric charging stations for electric cars as part of this. This is not a unique project per se. They've been doing this in Long Island Railroad Station, a number of them already have this kind of project. There's a couple of upstate that have it. It's the same as we're putting in the recreation center parking lots. So this is the largest one we've attempted, one megawatt, a significant amount. Now the whole, the way this program works, I think you're familiar, we did the last time, the L-Rex Zero Program, so unless you want me to, I won't get into that again.
Kristen?
I, if I'm correct, I don't know that we have printed materials, background material...
We haven't, I actually have been waiting to get it from this contractor, I haven't got it yet.
Okay.
I've got some preliminary stuff, but not the final power purchase agreement. His computer broke down, he said, we're waiting.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Bowman had mentioned that before the meeting, and I forgot to make note of that. We don't have the backup material. Should we, is there a motion to postpone this, or are you comfortable going ahead without seeing the actual purchase power agreement?
Well, Mike, I think the question would be, and actually that's a question for all of these, and which I think I asked last time, is, has the town attorney had a chance to review these documents? I'm not comfortable.
Yeah.
If there's not, if there's not a timeline issue, I would prefer postponing it.
There is a timeline issue, however, I think the first meeting in September of the Board of Select would still get this to the RTM.
That's the, yes, it's the second week in September, but it would still get it to the RTM.
Because there's no requirement to go to the Board of Finance, so there's no appropriation. So that would, yeah. I agree, all the other proposals we have before, the contracts have been reviewed by the town attorney and approved by the town attorney, or changes were made to comply with what he wanted and economically what I wanted. But the main thing is that all of them guarantee that for twenty years we will pay less for electricity than, or the same or less than we're paying now. And that's the biggest thing. Now, we said, we have that in writing for all but this one, so I would agree with that. I think it should be postponed until we actually have it and stand as a chance to read the agreements.
So I move that we postpone this item to our September eleventh meeting.
Second.
Okay. As part of our discussion, that postponement, just to make sure that we have all the data or information available at that next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Bowman, could you just confirm that this is all taken, this decision is all on town property?
That's correct. The state away from the state-owned property is where it is, it's all on town.
It's all on town.
And it's been reviewed by the Parking Authority?
Yes, the Parking Authority is the one, it brought forward from the Parking Authority. They were very enthusiastic about this.
For the next meeting, would it be possible to get a brief letter, memos, just...
They're gonna, they're gonna formally act on it at their next meeting. But they haven't got the proposal yet either. The concept has been approved by them, not the proposal.
Okay.
And in September, the Board of Education also acts on it, because they're receiving the power.
Right.
So by the time the RTM gets through it, you should have approved it, hopefully, the Parking Authority and the Board of Education.
For the Parking Authority, if we get documentation that they approve, just since it's a key part of their, and because of your affiliation with DPW, I'm assuming you've discussed this with DPW, and for things like snow plowing?
Yes, exactly.
And paving?
Also, it reminds me, your suggestion, we checked the fire department to make sure emergency vehicles get through, they're in buses in the time of when they're transferred. Actually, monitor shifting some of the projects, a lot of that to happen, so that was good.
Thank you. Then those are my questions that I just wanted to adjust before we go down the postponement. Any other questions before we go down the postponement?
Just one, and if you don't know the answer now, you can bring it back later. This is a much larger structure than the one that we're putting over by the Recreation Center. It's the same type of structure with all these other components that we talked about. So I guess my question is, in a structure this large, that's got a large, you know, platform, under heavy snow and other weather conditions, how are structures like this holding up in other areas where they might get 24 inches of snow dead smack in the middle of it? And that's a lot of weight, and I just don't know...
Well, it's...
How that's working out?
It's three or four things. One, it isn't one structure, it's a series of structures.
Okay.
The openings between, you know, where there's lines with cars, right, becomes a series of smaller structures.
Right.
Secondly, they designed it in a way so that it actually flows, it's tilted, it's not a flat surface. And the experience is that it all flows to the center and then down.
Okay.
Only occasionally, they actually have to get up there and remove the snow.
Okay.
So it's worked, upstate Connecticut, Long Island, so...
It's worked, okay.
Well, this is, right, if it was flat, I don't think I'd trust that, how you're gonna get up there to clean it up, which is their problem, but still, this way it gets the snow to one focal point and then down to the ground.
It runs off.
Yeah.
Thanks, I'm good.
Yeah, just as an aside, down where the Eagles play in Philadelphia, the entire parking lot...
Sorry, I wanted to talk about non-Giant football teams.
Oh, oh.
Oh, Giants players.
I second that.
Okay. Well, the bottom line is, they have an entire parking lot full, so it's, I'm excited to talk about it, but I'm still...
Didn't interfere with your tailgating?
I'm not, I actually don't go to the Eagles games.
No charcoal fires under there.
That's a good note.
I was at a Phillies game, actually, that's where I saw it.
Where's your gavel?
The, all right. Any comments in the public?
I don't have some fun here.
Back to the board, any further discussion? Are you stretching your arm?
Yes.
Miss Crosso?
No, one comment in the public, one in the public is wondering how many parking spaces this will take up.
It does take a many.
It won't.
It won't reduce the parking space at all.
Where will it be? Where will it be?
Over the parking lot. So that's right, over the parking lot.
So they're all, the cars are under it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Covered parking.
Back to the board.
Good.
Are we ready to vote on the postponement of this item to the, date certain the next Board of Select meeting, next, actually, it's gonna be a special meeting, not a regularly scheduled meeting, it's the next special meeting of the Board of Select.
I think we do vote on that as our regular schedule. So it is a regular schedule.
Is it a regular scheduled meeting?
Oh, okay.
Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Fair enough.
Is there a motion to accept that postponement?
We did, I think we did.
Did we do that?
Yeah.
We did a vote.
Okay, so just to vote, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, let's see who's up next. Mr. Bowman?
Jay.
To here consider an act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works. Resolved that granting of an easement to Green Skies for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of Public Works Garage at 705 Richard White Way for the sole benefit of Public Works Garage. The term of this agreement is being twenty years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
Item is now before us, Mr. Bowman.
This one's easier, again, it's just a rooftop, they don't even need to require a lease, they're just looking for a right-of-way agreement. The lease comes about from their financing companies, they, the town doesn't require it, but some of the financing companies require a lease. They just have a right-of-way, a right of access to the roof for twenty years, that's all they require. So it's just a power purchase agreement with a right of access, so there's no lease required on this one. And again, it's the same thing, it's guaranteed for twenty years, they pay the same or less for electricity. It's designed, built, owned and operated and financed by the private company, and our only involvement is buying electricity at a cheaper price, there's absolutely no other obligation in the town. After twenty years, we can either have a right to either renew the contract, buy it from an agreed-upon price, which is in the agreement, year by year if it terminated what it would cost us to buy it, or we can tell them to take their property and leave. But it's simple as that, so it covers the contingencies after twenty years as well as what happens in the first twenty years.
Any questions in the board? Kristen?
Just confirming, the price of electricity is the same price as today, or less than today, or...
No, less than whatever we were paying.
That's, that's what I'm...
But we did, I, to be the most conservative, I made them price it for twenty years as if our price today would never increase. So we're paying on average a fifteen and a half percent census glow an hour today. So, which they're measuring against that price for twenty years. So they couldn't charge us more than that over the next twenty years. So it's measured against today's price. If the price goes up over twenty years, we're gonna save more money. All these projects put together...
That was my question, okay.
Yeah. They try to use the most conservative, and I'm saying that, how can you guarantee what, you know, you don't know what's gonna happen to electricity. But I know for sure it's not gonna stay the same for twenty years. But they're all able to win a bid to stay with that assumption. So it looks like it's about a $2 million saving over twenty years, all these together, if there is no increase in electricity cost. If it goes up two percent a year, it could be as much as $4 million savings. But we took the most conservative estimate.
Mr. Cutler?
Good.
Any comments in the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote?
Just one more, again, confirming that these, as you said last time, the town attorney has had a chance to review, in part because there were a lot of documents for this meeting.
Yes.
And I can't say that I was, I was able to go through them as thoroughly, so I just want to know.
I confirmed, I confirmed with him on Monday again.
Fine tooth comb, okay. Yes.
Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brings up item number twelve. To here consider an act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works. Resolved that the granting of an easement to Green Skies for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of the Senior Center at 100 Mona Terrace for the sole benefit of the Senior Center. The term of this agreement being twenty years be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Bowman, do you want to step us through any of that?
Let's repeat exactly what I just said, it's just on a different building. In fact, I'd rather answer questions or if you want me to go through it.
And I forgot to ask this last time, so I think I mentioned before, I have solar panels on my house now, and we had to put a new roof on. I meant to ask that about the garage as well. What's the status of the roofs, are they...
Yeah, we have engineering department look at these roofs before we propose anything on them. So example, at the police station, before we put the generator, their engineering department went through it, and that needed some improvements to be made, and the improvements were made. On the Public Works Garage, no improvements are required. They've already looked at that.
And at the Senior Center?
Same, same thing. Because these, because as you know, they're not that heavy. The generator was very, you know, it was like 3,000 pounds, concentrated in a small area, which is why they had to make improvements. When this is spread out over a small area, the pounds per square foot is a lot less, and the impact of snow on it is a lot less. Therefore, these roofs are, will handle it.
If, if, what is the kind of, the plan if there was some kind of issue for some reason with the roof?
Well, if there is a...
Do we then have to pay for the removal of the unit?
No. Again, if we're at fault on the roof, it'd be our responsibility. If they're at fault, it's their responsibility. If it's force majeure, lightning strikes that a tree falls on it, then it becomes our responsibility also. But if anything they do to the roof, actually damages the roof, it's their responsibility to fix it.
Okay, thank you.
Just to expand on Kristen's question, Senior Center roof has, is kinda, was half redone, half existing.
Yeah.
Can you just elaborate on where this is going and...
It's gonna go on the safe portion of the roof, with what it was redone, that's right. And if it didn't work there, we would put it on the field, on the ground. You know, if it doesn't fit exactly, and there's still some question, you could still put it out on the ground, just like we, at the railroad stations, put it uncovered.
Now, as I remember, that's not a flat roof, that's a V shape. And the directional of the roof has been considered, so we're okay from a sunlight standpoint?
Yeah. They wouldn't, these guys wouldn't be proposing it, they didn't think they could make money on it. And any of the roofs that were, that's why I didn't go on the roof of the Recreation Center. There was the railroad catons, which shield the sun enough so it wouldn't be feasible on there, on one of the park lines. Some trees will be trimmed to make sure of that, that's about it.
Mr. Kylie, any more questions?
That's an important question, you're right.
Just a quick one, as far as the installation and all the work that gets physically done for that, does the vendor do all of that work? Do we contribute any work, any hours, any labor, any time?
We may pave the parking lot, and then, you know, like the recreation, we decided we're gonna pave the parking lot. So everything looks nice and new there, but that's just for the benefit of the Recreation Center, not of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number thirteen. To here consider an act upon a request from the Director of Public Works. Resolved that the granting of an easement to Skyview Solar for the purpose of erecting a photovoltaic electric generation system on the roof of the Fairfield Theater Company at 70 Sanford Street for the sole benefit of the Fairfield Theater Company. The term of this agreement being twenty years be and hereby is approved.
Some of.
A second?
Second.
I think I might correct, it's really for the sole benefit of the town, because we're paying the electric bill.
That was my first question.
Okay.
Thank you.
That should amend that, I think.
We're gonna need to, for the sole benefit of the...
Town of Fairfield.
Town of Fairfield. Just to get that out of the way, may I have a motion to amend this resolution replacing Fairfield Theater Company with the Town of Fairfield?
Some of.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments in the public? Back to the board, are we ready to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion before us has amended. Back to you, Mr. Bowman, any...
Once again, the roof, we put on the part of the roof that was rebuilt over the last few years, so it's, we know it can handle it. That's number one question, we have. And so that's why it's sized, if we can use the whole roof, or then bigger, we're using the part of the roof that's safe to put it on, so. And the rest of it's the same.
Again, the question of have the folks at Fairfield Theater Company and any of the other folks immediately impacted physically, have they been notified and are they part of the conversation?
No, they have not. I mean, basically, it's none of their business, so to speak. I mean, basically, it's none of their business, so to speak. But we will, once it's approved, we want to talk to them about it. They're not impacting on their operation whatsoever. It's the interior of the building. We're doing the roof of the building. We're responsible for the utilities and the HVAC equipment on the building. We're just doing that. Will we tell them if we're doing it? Yes, of course. But we didn't need their approval.
Right. No. Just, again, the communication.
Yeah.
This one is a little bit different in that I know, again, using the residential example, that sometimes folks are concerned about appearances, that not everyone loves the look of that. And I'm just, I don't have a photo for that one, so I'm wondering what kind of visibility will be. I'm very much in support of this project. I tend to be a function over fashion kind of person. But in this case, just wondering.
Well, I think there would be some visibility from Uncle Roar if you're walking by down the hill, but you're not going to see it from Sanford Street or the railroad station. You know, that roof is high enough, and it will be close enough to the roof, it'll be very, homeless and visible. But you look down on it from Sanford or Uncle Roar if you're walking.
Any further questions from the board?
Yeah. Just quickly, when I go through these items that we're voting on, I see that, you know, Skyview Solar is item 13 and 14, and Green Skies is 11 and 12, and Encon would be item 10 when we get to it. Can you, do they have different specialties? Is there anything you can share about these organizations? Why some were chosen for one and some were chosen for the other?
Other than Encon, I can't, we did a, like a, a lot of, it wasn't an RFP, but a lot of people made proposals to us about a year ago before we did the first proposals. And we took all those companies and looked at their background stats, et cetera, and compared them. And they all made proposals also for the same buildings. So we could take a look at, you know, what price they were bidding, whether it was realistic or not, what price they were offering us, whether it was realistic or not. And then eliminated some of them. Some of the companies only did smaller projects. So we separated those. Some did larger, or two of them did larger. One of the companies that did larger had actually backed out of working with us. And Green Skies is the one we chose from there. Skyview was one we chose, the smaller one, because they have by far the best proposals. I've done work in Fairfield County. Not have been around for 20 years. I mean, this, this hasn't been around 20 years for the most part.
Right.
But they had, all, they had success rates in Connecticut. That's the biggest thing. Now, Encon came along, they came out of nowhere basically and made the proposal on the railroad station to the parking authority. And we worked it through with that and make sure they're making the same, the same basis we're doing here. Your operating of the overprice versus the current rate of electricity for 20 years. Otherwise, you could, if you assume electricity's going up 2% a year, you could offer a hell of a rate, you know? But if it doesn't go up, we're stuck with paying more. So we make sure all of the, was bid on is exact same premises now. And Encon has put these type of facilities before in Long Island on the railroad station. So for that reason, we decided to go with them.
So they, they made sense for the larger one, and on the smaller and medium-sized projects, you're comfortable that we've got the right vendor on each building?
And I'm sure there's three or four more out there that are similarly capable, but for people that make proposals to us and we interviewed, yes. There's a dozen vendors out there doing this now, all of which are good.
Yeah. And the other interesting point you made is, you know, this hasn't been going on for 20 years. So when you look at doing a 20-year contract with a company that has been doing it for three or four or five years, there's inherent risk there. But there's, there's, you know, termination clauses and there's performance clauses in the contracts that have been reviewed and approved. So it sounds like we're going to be okay in the big picture.
We tried to minimize the risk. Again, it's one of the reasons we didn't want to just buy it. Public Works, we don't feel we are capable of maintaining and running these type of systems. You know, have the company to build and be responsible for the maintenance and fixing and repairing it rather than the town. So that's another reason we did it this way.
Okay. One last question. Who was the final decision-maker on choosing the vendors?
Basically, we did it, the first eleven, myself, the Director of Finance and Public Works Director sat down and reviewed all these.
With all the proposals?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Bowman, if I could, could you describe kind of the process that's been gone through here? They came to us, they filled out an application.
Yep.
Stepped through each of the steps before they came back and got approved and how this got through.
They all came to us with, and said, we're interested in doing projects with the town. Some of them chose buildings. Some of them didn't. We gave them bills, chose, and they came back to us with proposals. And as we had each proposal, we reviewed, as I said, the economics, the experience of the company, their experience in Connecticut, whether they did large or small. And some of them wouldn't, wouldn't even bid on the largest ones. That's not their focus.
Yeah.
Some would bid on the small. It's not their focus. And separated those into those particular types, the large versus the medium and small, and then interviewed them and chose the proposals from there.
Okay. Thank you.
You may recall that I had amended the minutes of an earlier meeting.
Yes. I was wondering what it was.
Related to the conversation about the schools. I had asked you at that meeting.
Oh, okay.
When we look at all these projects, it's incredibly exciting. We're doing this all over town, really. I mean, you're taking advantage of as much as you can based on companies coming in, as the first eleven just said, and we've repeated and emphasized. And I'm wondering about the possibilities for our school buildings. I know that's not your purview. But since we saw you back in early June, have you had any other conversation with Tom Cullen from the school district?
They, except for the timeliness in this project. And I know that they're looking at it at Riverfield. Now, again, they're, they're very conscious of roofs too and what's going to happen, much more than we are. They're just more conservative than we are. But as, I know a member of the building committee is also an energy task force, is really bulldogging that, trying to get them on Riverfield to consider solar on the roof there as they go forward. I've talked to him recently about a success, but we'll see what happens. And I do know that they are, they're working with us with UI now, Board Ed, which they weren't in the past. So they're moving in that direction, but they're slower than we are. But it's probably going to be around for the next 10 years. The schools are obviously targeted, huge flat roofs. I mean, this is the perfect thing, perfect place to do it, really. They could do a lot. I mean, when you look at Ludlow Ward and Ludlow Middle School, I mean, they're ideal targets for this. So I think we should.
Well, it occurs to me when you're talking about what you just said about the fact that we're leasing, we didn't buy, and in terms of liability, it ends up on those companies we're locking in at certain rates. And I'm hopeful that we can really strongly engage in those conversations on the town side with the Board of Education. And I recognize that the considerations are different because we have different needs in different buildings.
I think that conversation has to start at a higher level than that, is what I'm saying. I'll mental that.
I'll just encourage the first eleven then to continue that conversation with Dr. Title. I really, I think it's critical. I, it's, to take advantage of this, this is an opportunity. You've done a phenomenal job.
But you see, one of the reasons I know they're interested, a year ago, we had some fuel cell proposals also, which didn't win. And three of them were at the schools. They were one, they submitted bids for Ludlow Ward and Ludlow Middle School for fuel cells a year ago. Again, they didn't win those bids. But so I know they are interested. That was a big step. Fuel cells is a lot harder to deal with than, sort of, the town, so.
And again, the, just a little more background, just so we're all clear, that the economics in this whole kind of sub-industry have changed.
Yes.
A lot of it is being, in essence, promoted and subsidized by the state.
Yes.
With UI's help. So what's happening is, and let's take the fuel cells. One, Ludlow and Ward, we're both involved in those because they didn't go on the roofs. And as we know, Ludlow and Ward are both have projects underway to renovate their roofs. So a roof system may not be appropriate in the short term, though longer term it certainly would be. But specifically, the, in essence, these companies would come to the town, apply with us so that we would allow them to place an application with the state. Based on their economics with the state, some of them won or not. As Ed mentioned, a couple of companies that we had agreed to allow to bid on our behalf didn't win in the state lottery, for lack of a better term.
Reverse auctions.
Yeah. So they have an opportunity in the next year when that's opened up again to go back. So this is something that just started off, something I think Connecticut is pretty innovative with in terms of.
Yes.
What our state is doing to promote green energy, to give a chance for, again, this is something that town is getting involved in at no cost. And with all savings, all the upside, that the town involvement here is we get to save our costs on electricity based on the use of alternative energy sources like this. So it's, it's a huge change in how energy's delivered. It's a huge change in the economics. It's a payback to our residents and taxpayers through this. Again, it's another example of Mr. Bowman going to the ends of the earth to make sure that we find every penny we can save on energy costs. And I think he deserves our thanks and compliments in doing that again. But this is a different approach. It's not a program that was around four years ago or five years ago. Without the state getting involved, without the state setting this up, without the state providing the subsidy and structure, we would not be here discussing this.
You know, the other thing too is, by using the most conservative economics approach, that's why we didn't win the fuel cells. If we allowed them to assume a 1% a year escalation in cost, they would have bid lower to the state and probably got it. But then we would have been stuck if the energy price didn't go up that fast, so. So we don't want to do that either. But they'll keep trying.
I just, just to follow up in terms of the school piece, I'm glad that you noted that because I recognize it is a change. And again, I've used my, my own residential situation. Certainly, the Solarize Connecticut program was a big incentive for a lot of folks, and the economic model is a big part of that. And I think that's true for the town. So I do recognize, you know, that that is a change for all of us and want to recognize that as well. When we were having conversations as a town a number of years back in terms of school buildings and if it made sense, you know, things have shifted quite a bit, so I appreciate you.
Again, following what Mike has said, so the power purchase agreement concept's been around for a long time, but it didn't work without the state subsidy because, you know, it was just too expensive.
Well, it didn't work without the state subsidy. They've made a number of changes to it to make the program work. And again, another area that Mr. Bowman probably doesn't get enough credit for is working with the Commissioner of D to make changes to how these programs work, frankly, to make them work so that they work for everybody going out. So again, we're approving some of the things before us. We're looking at these projects because the state listened to Mr. Bowman and made some changes so that these would be more effective on board.
Quick question. When I was on vacation up in New Hampshire, I was doing some reading in some Vermont newspapers. And Vermont appears to be, from what I can tell, on the cutting edge of alternative technology and energy sources. At least, that's my understanding. And they have some programs up there that I think are more geared towards residential homes, but I think even some smaller towns are using them where they produce their own electricity. And the excess, not that we're in an excess position today, but I don't know what that would take to get there, but the excess energy that they're allowed to produce, they're selling it back to the grid.
They can do that, right.
For resale to other people. So I don't know if there's any, there's inherent issues with that as well. They have people's, they don't have enough people paying bills to fund other parts of the company. But putting that aside, are there any opportunities either within the state for either residents or for municipalities to actually over-create energy and derive some economic benefit from it?
Yes, the both.
Yes, the both.
There's an existing program which allows you to sell back any excess power to the power company for the same price they charge you for it, but only up to the amount you buy from the company.
Is that, okay.
So if you produce 80% of the power you need and buy 20% from UI, say, if you produce a 20% excess, they'll buy it back for it at the same price you paid for it. You get beyond that, it gets into that wholesale market at three or four cents, and it would cost you money to do it.
Okay.
That's for the town. But for the town, they've created a virtual net metering program. That's called net metering. Virtual net metering means if we were able to, we could actually design a facility to build power down at the landfill, let's say, you know, a big solar, which we're looking at the next time around, and sit, and tell UI we want that power to be credited to the library. And that's virtual net metering. It's never connected to the library, it's connected to the system. But that amount of power we make there could be credited to the library, up to five buildings.
Okay.
And you don't get the full credit for it, but you get 90% of what UI would sell it to you for. You got to leave them somewhere. I mean, they are doing distribution, so there's a piece of it there. So the answer is yes, the both.
Interesting.
We're looking at that.
Interesting.
Next time. That just changed. That's one of the things we, they changed in the law in June, the last day, some of our suggestions, and now we're going to go forward. The other thing they changed was, it was only eligible last year if the town owned the facility. And we said, doesn't make any sense. You created a program for the private guys on it, take the risk, and the program doesn't work then, so they changed it. Now you can do it through the private sector.
Interesting.
I think when you look at the economics, our state, it's something we should be proud of. The state is really taking a lead in coming up with ways to finance this, to help improve this industry, to help improve the environment and our economy. We didn't mention at the time, but I do want to point out that as part of the CPACE program, that is really structured based on financing that allows that to make sense. And in fact, Tom Flynn, Chair of Board of Finance, is involved with the Cepia Group at the state level. So he's been involved in kind of structuring this and making it available, the state. So our state's really been doing some tremendous innovations.
In a few short years, it's amazing. And it impresses me, they're willing to make the changes to make it work. In the past, if something was in it, it was fixed. Didn't work, we'd take years to change. Every year, they're changing to make it better.
It was, to that point, I mean, it was interesting to see the expression on Ed's face when he wrote up some things and we sent him along to Commissioner Esti. And the Commissioner responded, sat down with Ed, said, tell me how this all works. He did and made the changes. So all of a sudden, two months later, they're coming back with a program that works. The first version, frankly, wouldn't have worked.
We didn't know the changes were made, but then all of a sudden, they ended it, there they were.
Correct. So it, it's been quite an education, sitting with Mr. Bowman as we've gone through this, and look at all the different ways things are happening. And again, this is good for the economy, it's good for the environment, it's, it's just a great example. And I think it's one of the ways Connecticut, even though we're a small state, we're kind of leading the nation, I think, in some of these financial innovations to get this done. With that said, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Item number 13 is before us, as amended.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, item 14. Mr. Bowman, you're here again. Let me get this motion in a second and then we can carry on. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as requested by the Director of Public Works, resolve that the granting of an easement to Skyview Solar for the purpose